Well, welcome everyone to the Planning Board Meeting of August 22nd, 2024. We're here in city chambers and also via Zoom. Just a word about our Zoom. If any participants come on Zoom, we do take comments from them at the virtual podium. But the hearing is officially in person and all our presenters are asked to come here in person. You're able to send in comments to the staff prior to the meeting. But we don't accept at this point any chat comments either if you're out there in the Zoom world. One other note is that, you know, it's been about 10 years that the planning office hasn't provided Planning Board members with paper documents. Back, I was on the board prior to this in the 2000s and every couple of weeks we'd get this huge packet from the planning office that had plans and all the documents we needed. But that doesn't happen anymore. Saves a lot of posted, saves a lot of staff time. So we, we all look at our documents electronically. So that's why often we seem to be looking at our screens or our phones rather than engaging with the audience. And I hope the audience and presenters can understand that. So it was a good change. It was hard for this OG to get used to, but it's working. All right. So traditionally, we ask if there's any public comment before we open up the meeting to the public hearings, to the agenda. So anyone here at Council Chambers who'd like to make a public comment? On items not on the agenda? Okay. And there's still no one in Zoom world. Okay. Very good then at, well, let's open up a site plan to add 8,000 square feet to the existing warehouse by Green Mountain Electric. Supply at 168-178 Industrial Drive mapped by D18D-063. And 24B-087. And it looks like we have a presentation coming up.
Is it green?
You have to push the button.
Oh, do I should hold it while it's up?
No, just one, it turns green.
Okay. Hello, my name's Cole Modesto, Arlovex Associates. Do you guys want me to set up a board or should I just, just do strictly sharing?
Strictly sharing is probably okay. And what was your first name again? Cole Modesto. Okay.
I'm here today representing Mr. Matt Stoll for the project 168-178 Industrial Drive. Strike, set up. I just like to share, I'll share my screen before I get going. Okay. So the client today is, excuse me, client is here for, for a 8,000 square foot addition to property at 168-178 Industrial Drive. Currently, the, the property is developed. I'll just run quickly through the existing conditions. There are, you know, there are two curb cuts that will throughout the project be maintained. Access and egress will be continued as is today. The, the location of the addition will be in this, if you see my mouse, will be in this rear area of the site. Parking, we are very overparked as is right now. So there will be some removal of some parking right in this area as in order for truck movements because associated with this building, there will be a loading dock. So a truck will come in and load right here. Let me just go to the demo so you actually see what I'm talking about. This is just our demolition sheet and showing what will be removed. It's very minimal. It's mainly the bulk of the demolition here will be for, to reroute a water and gas line around the building. Currently, it would be going underneath the proposed building. So that is the bulk of the demolition work that is being proposed here. A fire hydrant is being relocated just, just, just around the building, just right slightly around it. Just along with that water line associated to it. And here's our layout for it. The project does classify as a redevelopment for the stormwater standards. So in order to make sure we meet that criteria, they, the new impervious area that we are proposing with the building roof will be subsided with the, this is, was existing is impervious area over here. And we are going to propose we rip up that part of the parking lot and low man seat it and provide grassed area in this side of the parking lot. I know you guys previously saw a plan where we had proposed over here be gravel, which one, we revised it. We took it for your comments into consideration. We said, all right, over here is a better area. It's that way. We're not, we're not doing some sort of weird gravel parking lot with grass in between area, which made sense. As far as utilities grading wise, there's really not much to see as far as the, the loading dock will be depressed loading dock. But as far as utilities go, like I said, the main thing is to reroute a gas and water line around the building. Electric and sanitary will be brought through the existing building. The use of the building will maintain as is, I know it's multi-tenant, but the current owner, Green Mountain Electric will, will be the company using this building for existing use. I guess that's kind of, I'd like to open up for any questions. Sorry, was it?
Storing that, that, that area on the right?
Yes, sir.
What is, what is that currently?
Currently is parking lot. Yeah. So we'd like to rip it up and low man seat it. Uh, I believe it's noted here. Sorry, it's a little small for me to see. I know it's, it's, it's greater than the area of the 8,000 square foot. I believe it's 8,900 square feet.
And it's contiguous with that other lawn area there, right?
Yes, sir.
They're just expanding.
Uh, we are, maybe I should have clarified also that, uh, mouse can move here. A, uh, two new islands are being proposed here. I should have pointed out. This island, it was new on our new revised set and it's going to be a grass, grass with a tree in the middle as well as this island here. We have, with the revised set, there were some trees kind of relocated and made more aesthetically pleasing and to break up the parking as well. That's, that's about it for that.
Did you, um, these plans look new since the other day?
Yes, to the portal. Yeah, I would say maybe around one o'clock.
Got comments from DPW, probably related to the old plan set about the gravel.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, sorry, I should have told you. Those comments from DPW have been addressed. I think a response letter has also been uploaded to that portal.
So you saw DPW comments in the portal?
Yes. Yeah.
What are your, oh, what are your total parking spots? The narrative lists 164, but.
Right. Uh, with that new island proposed in that top left-hand side is taking away two spots. So it's 162. I believe the requirement was somewhere around 96, 94.
Yeah. Why are you going with so many?
Off, that, that's just what was existing on the site. And where, where the truck movements are being proposed to be able back into that site, we'll be reducing that. Yeah, we're, we're not adding, we won't be adding to any park.
Yeah.
It's overparked as it is.
Yeah, okay. During business hours.
And we can't really ask them where the construction is happening to create some more green space where the demolition is happening. Instead of where the demolition is happening, is it gonna remove any of the parking temporarily and then parking be replaced?
Uh, during the construction process?
During the demolition of the gas and water line.
Right. A few parking spaces along this southwestern side of the building. There's currently a parallel parking right there. Uh, those will obviously, because that pavement will be ripped up, those will be taken out. But we'll only be talking about, I think it was like five spaces. Buffer of about 60 more spaces to work.
Yeah, there's. Tell me about the, the use of the new, new warehouse. Is it retail too? Is it like Hamden Zimmerman? Are people contractors coming in and going out?
Uh, I'm not, I can't specify exactly with them. They are, they're going to continue with what they are doing with Green Mountain Electric. They're not going to be doing anything different. Assuming that they're changing all that.
Yeah.
To another plumbing supply company.
This is electric supply.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's the same company that owns, owns, the only thing that happens there is, is plumbing and cool and whatever.
So is Green Mountain Electric Supply, uh, like Hamden Zimmerman or is it, uh, is it part of the, uh, the, the grid? Is it one of those alternative grid supply companies? What are, what's being warehoused there?
Um, I don't know for sure. And, and just to clarify, so there, so it's a, we look at it as the same type of use that was previously there. Um, I don't know exactly the materials. But then, and the reason why this is kicking into the planning board is because it's an 8,000 square foot expansion of the building, which is in excess of the 2,000 that's allowed by rights.
I'm just, if, if this new addition is like for contractors too, like the plumbing supplier like Hamden Zimmerman, then we would want to see some kind of pedestrian access, some kind of crosswalk, some kind of safety features, you know? So all I see is that it's, uh, loading docks. And I just wanted to double check to make sure it wasn't with the name would make me think that.
Are there any elevations or anything of this addition for us to look at? Maybe that all's just that.
It's not, uh, two overhead doors to it as well. We're not talking like a retail building. Let me try to.
Okay.
That, all right.
Answer to the question, yeah, patient packet.
About what the use was.
Their use wasn't going to be changing from anything substantially different.
But it wasn't anything before. It's a new, it's a new business.
No, I'm saying that the company, they can call it Joe Bob. It, it's the only thing that goes on there right now, and I've been in the entire building, is a plumbing supply store. It's moving deck. That's it.
Bunch of red bull trucks.
But that's, that's all they, that's, that's all that's there. I guess here's some elevations of what the, uh, what it's going to look like.
All right.
They maintain with, uh, with aesthetic of the existing building. Right here in the center will be where that depressed loading dock is. There's some other angle.
So I'm not an architect, but architecturally, this isn't screaming, front door, come, right, park here. This looks like a back of house. Two, two truck docks and two at grade overhead doors and associated man doors. So I think it's, looks like a back of house operation to me. You know? Um, I could see that, that restored area that you're, you're reverting into lawn, that looks like it's within a buffer zone. Are you working with the Conservation Commission?
Yes, we have a meeting from, I believe, next week.
Okay.
Next week or if not two weeks from now.
And is that in the same general catchment as the addition? So you're, you're restoring or you're matching your impervious areas in the same drainage?
Yes. So that, that's all part of that same sub-catchments of it. And that's going to be treated. I can actually show you on the other plans how that's going to be treated. I can extensively talk to you about stormwater.
No, that's okay. You can talk to the Conservation Commission about it, but I just want to make sure that, that you are.
Oh, of course.
So I, I see there's a concrete walkway called out to the, uh, to the west at the bottom of the addition. That doesn't seem to attach to anything. Or is that?
I'm sorry. Right. We're over here.
Right down here. I thought. Concrete, it's a concrete walkway. Trying to figure out where or why.
It does show 15 feet from the edge of the building to, I think that's just where you're still, you know, driving around.
Yeah, it's.
I don't say walkway.
I'm just wondering why they would put a walkway there.
Sort of at the bottom of your screen there, right below your shaded new area that says by two minutes walkway.
Oh, that's what, that's an existing concrete. That's not a proposed, that. We will, we will, we don't be getting rid of the, uh, that will be, this will be a curb along right here, protecting the building.
Okay. All right. The, the plans I have, another question. Thanks for that one. The plans I have show the islands in a different location. And, and so could you go back to where these green islands are?
Yep, absolutely.
I'm just wondering, it's such a sea of pavement there. I'm trying to see if there's any way during this
Right.
period of construction, if we can get some more green space in there, some.
Which, yeah, we saw that comment and like, hey, you know what? We should be breaking up this parking. So originally, well, this, this island was not proposed. This was just normal parking that was just existing. Uh, and this was striped, but we, we were transforming it into, this will be a landscaped island with a tree as well as, as well as this will now be, will break up the parking, landscape island, throw a tree. And also throwing.
And what's that little crosshatched area there? To the left of the bottom landscaped island?
This one?
Uh, yeah.
This, this is striped area. This is to hopefully maintain the truck movement in order to cob and back into it.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, while you're talking about the landscape islands, um, can you describe how, is there a detail for that island? How wide it is and what, um, whether, I mean, it should be wide enough to be able to accommodate a tree. So five to seven feet, is that?
Right. They are existing with the, uh, I believe currently it's eight and a half foot to nine foot parking spaces.
Got it.
And we're taking up the full width of that.
Okay. And just so, so I noted the comment that to meet the parking requirements, the shading for parking, I think they needed seven trees in the parking lot to break up at a ratio of one per 15 parking spaces. So you're putting in?
Into 25.
Uh, I'm sorry, one to 25, yep. So.
Yes, we are.
Putting in.
There'll be.
Okay.
One here, 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 three, and then we have four. We want to, want to break up this newer area, line it, some trees. And I have the list of the typing of trees right up top here. Keeping off the native species. And I know one of the comments was to change our original proposed species of trees.
And because we're talking parking, these aren't new parking spaces, so it doesn't trigger our EV installation, right?
Right.
Okay, so those are not the species.
You don't, you guys would prefer separate species, different species for this?
So the, some of, these were actually recommended by the tree warden, um, as not necessarily native but non-invasive. And they are good for wet areas. So I think these are proposed towards the wetland and the wetland buffer. Yeah. I mean, not that you have to go to, we have a whole list and the applicant can basically select from the list.
Sure, and we're absolutely, if you guys want to see different trees, we're absolutely willing.
And the lighting situation, the fact that, uh, there's no lighting shown? We, we just assumed that they're going to be tied with the lighting.
Um, you can certainly have a condition that shows prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy that they, um, show a certified, um, a plan certified by, uh, lighting engineer that it meets the zoning with no waivers.
But isn't it a?
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but we do, we did end up submitting a lighting plan, uh, I believe yesterday for Green Mountain Electric Supply submitted a lighting plan for it.
Okay.
And I was just trying to pull it up now.
So this is for exterior site lighting? So it'd still need to meet the color temperature and the maximum light allowances in the general industrial district for outside lighting.
This is the proposed lighting plan. Oh, okay. Yeah, sure. It's, it's in the as well.
You know, there are two huge poles in this parking lot that are larger than any other poles in the industrial park. One of them is always on, one is always off. Um, I don't know if, if, if retroactive, they apply to the criteria in the lighting plan. Um, they're multi-heads and I, I don't know, and I can't tell if there, I just saw that plan real quickly. I don't know if they're sewn on this plan. Um, but are we concerned only with the lighting that comes with the, the new addition?
The proposed addition, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Yeah, so they can't change the heads on those without coming into compliance, no matter what. So even if six months from now, they change the, the head on those lamps, they have to comply to current standards. But they're not required to, and because they're not changing that part of the site, that's why it's not triggered.
All right. Uh, why don't we take a moment and open it up to the public? Is there anybody here in the city council chambers who'd like to speak in favor and opposition to the, uh, application? We're all good here? And we still have no one joining us on Zoom tonight?
Nope.
Gosh, you have lots. It's good. All right. Any further questions from board members? Well, let's wait till we can still ask the applicant a few things if, if it comes up.
I didn't see the DPW comments. I saw the response to the DPW comments just now when I looked in there. I assume there was nothing.
So we're still. We're still adjusting to this new portal. And just today, Department of Public Works decided they're going to put their review comments actually right in the portal at, in the details section, sort of right at the top. It says Department of Public Works review. And I'll read them because I copied them now into the minutes. Some of them have been addressed this afternoon. But, um, Carolyn, where are they? So on the front page of the.
Oh, the details tab?
The details.
Okay.
Um, if you, if you go to details tab and you scroll just half a page, maybe three quarters of page down on the right says Public Works Department Review. Do you see that? I can share my screen if you want. So click on the details.
Yeah, I'm on the details.
Okay. And then on the right-hand side, the top of the details, it says details and it says planning and zoning review. On the right.
I don't see that.
No.
Planning Board view.
Now that's. Yeah, that just, I just, no, no.
Oh, true. I'm on the inside.
I just lost it. There we go. There we go.
Come on the final printout.
Uh huh. Uh, well, no, I, I have the thing back up, but I don't know where.
To you and I'll have to look at, to see what the outside. Okay, so it's for stormwater comments, the, I'm just going to read the name of some of these. The gravel, the area gravel identified in the plan of the southwestern side of the property appears to be pavement in poor condition, not a gravel base on a site visited by DPW, a strip of pavement 2,300 feet square feet adjacent to this area is proposed to be removed or replaced with gravel, which will result in an area of gravel surrounded by pavement. It appears to be used for truck parking and snow storage. And a change in gravel may result in less stable service and greater discharge of sediment and gravel into nearby catch basins. Existing surface condition should be confirmed. And then, so that part is what I think led to the change of saying, okay, we're not going to rip up this and make more gravel. We'll put, we'll just make it grassed strip area adjacent to the existing grass. And then the second comment, stormwater operation and maintenance plan should be implemented for the stormwater system by the property in order to ensure that the system continues to function in good working condition. The stormwater operation and maintenance plan must be a critical DPW and reported as part of the planning board decision. Then.
Is that typical, Carolyn?
So.
Why wouldn't Conservation Commission be doing that? Why wouldn't the Conservation Commission require an operation maintenance plan?
They may also, but because this is a major project, but it doesn't trigger its own separate stormwater permit because it doesn't rise, it's not that big of a project. As a major project, the planning board, I'm sorry, the DPW often recommends in the planning board that the commission may be written to, um, create an operation maintenance plan. It gets then reported next to the decision. Um, and so it's clear as it passes on, you know, to the subsequent owners.
So there could be two operation maintenance plans recorded?
No, they'll be, so, um, it'll be the same ones.
You're right.
Conservation Commission usually just evaluates this stormwater maintenance plan. And if there's already one, I mean, we coordinate so that there's not two being separately reported.
Okay. Okay.
Which is convenient if we're all in the same department.
Very much.
And then other utility comments, prior to construction, DPW likes to get hybrid material specifications. DPW and excavation permit required for any excavation in the city right away. So these then are just comments not to be for planning board conditions, but somehow it went to the applicant, but it's not viewed on the public side of it. So I think it's, um, so anyway, that part works because DPW is going to make sure that, yeah, they have. And that's it.
So if I might then, the, the area that DPW spec that really isn't gravel but degraded macadam, I guess, that's not being altered at this point.
Right.
So will the cons comm look at that? Cause they are using that for truck parking and storage.
I think the key piece is making sure you have a maintenance plan so that you're treating and collecting the sediments before they go into the catch basin. So that's part of, that's the bigger issue is even if it's degraded, you still have to maintain your stormwater.
And they'll look at anything that's in the 50-foot buffer.
Right.
Other questions for the applicant? Um, so we have a lighting plan. There's no traffic, um, study associated with this. There's no other.
Was a waiver for the traffic waiver request.
Ah, is there? Okay.
Resting us.
We're accepting that waiver during our motion. Prior to CO, there has to be a certification that the lighting installs comply with the zoning and the plans.
So we weren't asking for any like ITE calculations for an extra 8,000 square feet of this use? As far as truck, as trips go?
Yeah, so they're asking for a waiver from the traffic study, given that this is already quite a large industrial use. And we don't require mitigation in the industrial district and it's, you know, it's sort of confined within the industrial park, then no, yeah.
That would, I think, yeah, they'd have a lot more truck traffic and, yeah.
Uh, we still have, uh, sorry, let's cut somebody off. Seven bike parking spaces, I believe.
Seems unusual, but it's, uh, yep, maybe the people who go to degrees of comfort could use the bike parking also. So is there, does the plan spec out a location for the bicycle?
We're having, uh. The first bike enclosure will be up where the, I guess if someone were to ride in on a bike is where the bike enclosure is proposed.
Okay, up by the plumbing.
Employees too.
Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely.
I've been there on my bike to buy something and just had to lean against the.
Not down by the loading docks.
Okay, good.
Carolyn, I need the, the way that we just discussed a minute ago, um. Why it's not mentioned in staff report?
I don't know.
You started.
Oversight, oversight.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Melissa pulled it out of the application.
Yeah, it was in the application.
And we should know about that.
Yeah.
All right. Good, I think, uh, we pretty much have our answers. Um, I, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing now.
Thank you.
Did you move? Did anyone make?
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, motions are made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those favor closed in the public comment? Unanimous. Thank you.
Entertain a motion.
We're feeling bold.
I'll do it. Uh, I move that we approve the site plan to add eight thousand square feet to the existing warehouse by. Green mechanical electric supply at one sixty-eight, one seventy-eight Industrial Drive. Um, I think with the waiver for the traffic study accepted and. Uh, the condition that, uh, prior to CEO certification that the lighting. Installed complies with the zoning and plans. Uh. Is there the other condition there, Carolyn, that?
A smaller maintenance plan recorded with the condition.
Right, maintenance plan recorded with the condition. Uh, pre-construction plans incorporating conditions that include parking lot layout. Oh, they've already done that. Okay. Yep, so just those two conditions and the accepted waiver.
Good, thank you. Sir, second?
Second.
Thanks, Rich. Motion's been made by Melissa, seconded by Rich Baker. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, guys.
This is your first time in front of the Northampton planning board?
Yes, sir.
You're batting a thousand. Good man.
We got out in one hearing. That's very rare. Sure, things are on pretty smooth up in Northampton though. Good night, everybody. Is this your flash trap? Oh, you know, I, I called it. I was gonna forget it. Thank you.
Still nobody out there knocking on the Zoom door, huh? You have a big dude on it, you're signing on it? I don't think they have an annual button.
I, I do want to submit for public record that my online order at Pointe Musano got kicked out. Today, got canceled. So there might just be some technological problems in the city.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, I wonder where you were going with that.
Yeah.
All right, um.
I wonder if they, if this is the new thing to have people in council chambers be able to hear.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sunday, Sunday.
Okay.
It's not your mic, it's just your computer.
You know, I'm having audio issues with this, but I had it turned on.
He writes to me, none of my files will open now. You know, your order got rejected. Now all of my PDFs won't open here. Let's try this. Okay.
Technology.
Messenger. Give me one, one second.
Yeah.
These up.
Yeah.
That's your protein water. I like spicy barbecue pulled pork, either like.
I haven't been that year. All right, you feel good now?
I think I'm ready.
Okay, at this time, we, at seven thirty PM, we'd like to open up site plan. For a second, that's going by Tim O'Reilly. At fifty-three Union Street, F I D thirty-two-eight, that's oh-six-seven. And I believe he has a picture for a presentation.
Yes, I'm Tim O'Reilly. I'm here tonight on behalf of the homeowners at fifty-three Union Street. Um, their mother is, is moving and she's planning to move in the side yard, be close to her daughter and her grandchildren. So I'll walk you through tonight. Um, what we're proposing to do, how we meet all the applicable zoning requirements. Um. I just went in there. Um, he was the fall guy, got the DPW comments. Uh, pulled up as well. We can look at those. Um, why don't we start with the site plan? Um, we're in the U R C district, so we're meeting all the applicable requirements under. Um, three fifty, um, six dot eleven, the form-based criteria for the two and single family homes. Um, the one thing in here, um, that we don't meet and that we're requesting planning board, um, approval for, is our porch dimensions. So I'll flip over here. Um, we'll look at two things together. Here's our proposed front porch. Um, this porch is about nine and a half feet wide, um, and only five feet deep. Um, it doesn't meet the six foot depth requirement. So the requirement is eight feet by six feet. We are nine and a half feet wide, but we are only five feet deep. Um, the reason for this, uh, why we're sort of inset here, um, is the layout on the lot. We're against the front. Property setback and then in the back, let's take a look at this together. Um, we need ten feet of building separation between our new proposed building and what's there existing. And, um, if that porch were to stick out that extra foot in front. You know, we're here, this porch is that shaded area. We were to push the building back another foot to make sure within the front setback. Uh, we'd be getting even closer to this deck and right now we're just a hair or may, we're in compliance with that ten foot setback. So. Um, we are wider than the, the requirement, but we're only five feet deep and not six feet. Um, but no, it doesn't count in terms of, it'll count in terms of our, you know, open space calculation. Um, it doesn't count in terms of the square feet of our proposed second unit.
But if you're asking.
But it said that, it didn't leave from the corner of the house property.
Um, I believe I'll check with our civil team, but we talked with the town on what they wanted to see with the building department, um, and they wanted to see ten feet between. Um, our proposed unit and that deck. So we're actually, there's a little. Corner there, we're going to clip just a hair off of that deck, uh, to make sure we're, we're ten feet away. Um, you know, frame that entry to the backyard a little bit. Um. Yeah, um, so that's, that's, you know, sort of procedurally the only thing in there. Um, otherwise, um, through our application process, um. Uh, zoning or open space came up, so our open space table is down here. Um, which we added in there based on the lot size, um, using the open space definition of the bylaw and what we're proposing here in terms of. Um, dwelling space and porches as well as the added parking space. So what's there right now is sort of the shotgun style driveway, um, the stack spaces, and we now have. A space off to the side. So we're in compliance with all the parking requirements.
Drop down into that chart.
Yep. So we have our existing lot coverage, our proposed lot coverage. Um, over here on the side is our lot size. And so those calculations down there, oops, let me scroll over. Um, are based on our total lot size, what's existing and what's proposed. Um, and that includes everything we're building and the parking.
And you need to have thirty percent, right? Open space?
Thirty percent minimum.
Yeah, minimum, and it was at. Thirty-one, I can't remember. What, what's, what did it end up at?
Six, sixty. Huh?
Huh?
Sixty?
That's what it says.
Open space percent sixty.
Sixty-one.
Um, so.
A little bit of an obstacle.
Yeah.
Doesn't look good to your eye.
No, no, it doesn't. I thought that maybe there was a mistake and they had flipped those numbers and it was really forty percent that was open.
Yeah, it's maybe that, it, I just did, I had the same exact thing. I was like, let me double check this. And I did the math, we're. Forty percent, if we're dividing our proposed. By our lot size, we get forty percent of lot coverage. Of all of our, um. Decks, building area, parking spaces, uh. We're at that forty percent lot coverage. Forty percent is covered, sixty percent is open.
Email although.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I, that was good. And, you know. The side and front setbacks. Give you a lot of area that kind of gets.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to, um. So true.
Got pulled up the property card. Uh, I'd be happy to walk through the math if you can. Yeah. Yeah, um, that was one thing that came up. The other thing with the trees on the neighbor's property. Um, so these trees here along the side yard are on the neighbor's property. Um, we've contacted an arborist. He went out and did a site visit. Um, I was just away on vacation, so I just got back today and, um, just got you the email. Um, from the arborist over at Bartlett Tree Service. Um, so just to go through this, he said, you know, we can absolutely prune. Um. He said, I think the fence suffices as physical protection for the trunks of the trees, but given the proximity to the trunks where excavation will occur, I'd recommend root pruning. Prior to digging to avoid unnecessary injury to the root systems beyond the edge of the excavation. Also, given the fact that trees will likely endure some root loss fertilization to help. Give the trees food and allow them better chance at coping with losses and aid in recovery as well would be recommended. So I, I haven't, I've uploaded this to the portal today. Um, I don't have a formal proposal for you. Um, we are going to follow all their recommendations. So the tree trimming, the existing tree protection as the fence. Uh, root pruning before any digging starts. Fertilization in the fall, um, for those affected roots.
So are you working with the abutting, uh, property owner for the fertilization? Because generally you want to fertilize on the other side of the tree to encourage root growth away from where you're digging. So you don't want to fertilize on your property.
I, I don't know the direct answer to that.
Okay.
I'll go exactly what their recommendation is. If that involves any work on the neighbor's property, we'll absolutely be sure to inform them and let them know and explain the rationale.
I'm really surprised that there's two maples right at the sidewalk there that are expect out here and one of them is really, really. Sick down at the trunk of the tree. I'm, I'm surprised that Mr. Bartlett didn't call that out. I, I don't think it's going to survive anymore without construction. So I'm just recommending you or Mr. Bartlett, look at those trees again so you don't. Get caught down the road when that one dies.
Ah, yeah, and I, I am by no means the tree expert. So, um, when I get this proposal back, I'd be happy to share that with you. Um, if you want to see more details.
And just to get a little bit of the tree experts down the line there at that sixteen inch beach. Long like a maple street.
Okay.
Got to find something on this site.
So, uh, porch, um, trees, open space. Um, the last one here is just DPW comments. Um, so I just, on my end, on, on the inside. I just grabbed these. I just went in here today and did these, um, this morning. So I just want to look at that, with, look at these with you and we'll talk about them. Um, so we're going to do all applicable permits with the DPW water and sewer availability entry. Um, fill everything out, pay, pay the fees. Um. They had our existing water and sewers is cer, excuse me, existing water and sewer not shown on the plan. Um. Let's see, where's our plan here? We've showed our proposed here. So our water and sewer coming across the front. To the front of the existing house. Um, that is where those utilities connect to the street from the main house, water and sewer. Are in the existing house going into the street. Our plan is to connect there for both of those and. Um, the DPW has provided some guidance in number three on how they want to see that. So they want to see a meter pit, um, for. The water meter and then two shut offs, one to the ADU and one to the house. Um, I have seen this in other municipalities, so we'll make sure we, we comply with exactly what they want to see. Um, and then they have a note just in here that, uh, we and the property owner are responsible for the line that services the building. From our new building to that connection and, you know, we'll, we'll meet plumbing code with all the required clean outs. Um, in the structure, outside of the structure and, um, as needed. Let me make sure I didn't miss anything. Um. That's it.
Can we talk about the parking one more time?
Sure.
Are, are we expanding the, uh, the curb cut?
Uh, no, so, um, we're required to have an additional space based on our proposed new square footage. Um, what's there right now? Um. See, do I have a draw tool? Here we go. So what's here right now? Um. How do we have this shaded? I believe is here in blue. So their existing driveway is here. Our proposed expansion to make sure that we're fitting the required size spaces is, switch over to red, an expansion. Um, here, in order to, to have that, you know, eight and a half feet by eighteen. And then as well, um, they have this existing area along the side of their porch here. Um, that is already currently, um. Sorry.
So they, they, they come in off the street and then fan out to that space. Right? We're not expanding because.
Correct. Yep.
Wha- what are curb cuts supposed to be? Thirteen feet?
Uh, maximum fifteen.
Fifteen, and this one's about twenty, twenty-two, so I imagine that's grandfathered in. Right?
What we're here, two, two parking spaces wide, uh, would be nineteen feet. Um, so that's what we're showing here at least.
And if you say staying the same or?
So here, I don't have measurements on this plan. If you'd like specific measurements, I can absolutely go. Get those for you here. Um, this is where we're showing this curb cut. Here in red, can you guys see that? Yeah. Um, so.
You're not touching that curb.
Correct, nope.
It looks like it's. Pretty much wide enough to accommodate two cars.
Yeah.
Two cars. So I'd say it's grand father.
Yep. If, if the homeowners could have it their way, they wouldn't do a third space for their elderly mom. Uh, we're not even going to park her. It's like, we, uh, we got a show that we need it, so. Correct, exactly. That'd be prepared for the, so.
It's not grandfathered. They're asking for a change and they're wiping. You know, they're, they're making a change to parking and so you can have the, it may be an existing condition, but if they're, um, the board. Can approve wider, um, they could also, the board could also require narrowing. At the opening and then why it can widen out on the, their own property. It's really just where it crosses the sidewalk. Um, and so. Um. It, you said it's eighteen instead of fifteen feet?
Uh, this is, I, I was speaking to two parking spaces wide here is eight and a half plus eight and a half, so at nineteen, that's not the curb cut. Yeah. Would be on.
They're not doing any work from the sidewalk to the street. So they're not touching anything.
Okay. So basically, I think you should just acknowledge the existing condition and allow it to continue to be accommodated. Because they're not changing the curb. They're not asking for any trench permitting in the street.
But the reason we keep it at fifteen feet is so that pedestrians don't have to navigate that large area, right, on sidewalks. Okay, and speaking of sidewalks, the, the sidewalk in front of the proposed building. Um, i- is rather dicey and all busted up, but I don't think that's within our purview to ask the developer to. Replace sidewalk, it's, uh.
So, um, it depends, um, you know. There could be quite a bit of construction damage. There could be quite a bit of construction damage coming in and out and across the sidewalk. That could be, um, you know, the D P W could ask them to replace it if there's additional damage to the sidewalk.
It's not a concrete sidewalk, it consists black top.
And typically for a major project, the board does require replacements, but this is a, you know.
Okay. We'll let you open it up to the public. Is there anyone here in Capitol Chambers who would like to speak for or against this application? And still nobody else out there, and not even Mr. Hansel tonight, okay? Very good, other questions from board members? All right.
Is there a reason to mean this, the, the five versus the six, wait, okay? You have an opinion about it?
So there, so there are standard, um, design guidelines that were established and adopted by city council to. Um, ensure that, um, new units in all of the neighborhoods had sort of that. Um, public private interface and porch debt, so it's a standard, um, porch debt requirement, but there's specifically. Aliances for the board to approve waivers, given certain si- situations. Like, I think this is a good example of a situation that might warrant it, and they're making it wider, but it's, it's just sort of, um. I mean, the other thing about this existing house is it doesn't have a front porch, it has a side porch, it's, you know, the side of the house is facing Union Street. So, um, a- and frankly, that's, you you know. This neighborhood and many neighborhoods don't have exactly the same, you know, orientation for every house, so. I think it's a reasonable request for that, but the the reason for the dimensions just to have a basic sort of set of standards for. Follow and then.
And and the area is essentially the same, it's forty-eight square feet versus forty-seven point five square feet, so I think they're meeting the intent. Based on the constraints.
Think the only place where something might come into play is if there was a a a handicap accessible ramp built, maybe that'd be. Six feet would give a more turning radius to get in the front door, but, um, I don't think that's why we chose six feet for that, but. All right.
So, so just to be clear, the the.
Trying to create a minimum standard for that, so that, you know, if you've just had it without a dimension. I'm sure you see all sorts of things, just to meet the letter.
Good, any special lighting we should be aware of?
Uh, no, this is a residential project, um, let's go over to the layout. Uh, everything we're doing is dark sky compliant fixtures, um, so there'll be. Um, a fixture here in the front, a fixture on the side, and a fixture along the back, um, they'll all meet those requirements.
The the units on either side of this, I think are rental units, which traditionally. Folks don't come and are concerned too much about projects when you're renter, so I guess. Um, the 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 property owners were notified, though, be via the postcards, right, so. Yep.
I have a question about the arborist, it's not a report. So we're probably gonna make a condition that the, follow the recommendations of this, of the arborist. It's, it's an email that just says we we could probably do these few things, is that okay?
I think, yes, I I would recommend, I think that was the biggest issue, is that arborists should look at the trees, figure out if there's gonna be a negative impact from construction and. Propose mitigation, okay, so.
We can't propose, I mean, we can say you think you should do this, but it's happening on someone else's property, you can't force them to. To go on someone else's property.
No, the work is being, the mitigation will be on where the cutting's happening, so it'll be on this applicant's property.
Well, you, Chris was talking about the, um.
Fertilization.
Fertilization would need to happen.
Right, but the root pruning.
To force it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but you'd want to make sure, I mean, the neighbor would need to be in agreement.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know, the board can't require that, but the other, ever, anything on this side of the property to protect the tree.
Yeah, no, I get it, I just want to make sure that we say that, we don't impose something that's not.
Right.
Well, I mean, the board could require an agreement from the abutter that they will allow fertilization on their property.
Um, I think maybe the other, the, I I would recommend if you're gonna sort of. Go down that path more that agreement from the abutter, that the abutter understands the recommendation from the arborist. And doesn't have a problem with the fact that the tree roots are gonna be cut. On the neighbor's property, and then not necessarily saying that the neighbor ascends to. Fertilization, but a sense to the work being done with respect to the trees. You see what I'm saying, so before issuance of a building permit, you could require that the applicant submit. A statement from the abutter saying they understand the work's being done and they don't have any issues with it.
Yeah, I don't know, because what if they did have issues with it, like, we don't typically say you can't do work on your property because. I have a tree. And you might be affecting my root system.
Yeah.
That's.
I think we can just say, these are the renting days, I mean, I mean, who, if I if I own a property, of course I want someone.
Right, me too.
You're, if, fertilized, just saying we can't, we have to make sure that the email isn't.
I have, I I just want to pardon me being on the phone, I have the proposal, I literally just got back this morning. Off on vacation, so this all happened while I was away, I had a screenshot of the email, I have the proposal here as well. Um, we we happy to submit that.
Yeah, I think, you're right, so I think it's just that, um, the. My initial concern was, what if the arborist said, no, this, there's no way you can do this work without killing the trees? And I think the planning board could make a determination. The artist is not saying that, but is not saying you should do this root pruning, you should do these other things. And so I think to the extent that the board conditions that the recommendations on this property are done. Um, and if that, if the abutter doesn't want fertilization on that side, there's nothing the applicant can do.
Okay.
Um, and it looks like it will be both the fertilization and some of that pruning, so. I think the other, you know, unspoken piece is the, will certainly be neighborly, and give them a heads up and let them know and walk them through the proposal and. Show them the due diligence we've done, or entries.
Good, good.
And I think there's, um, are we gonna waive the traffic mitigation requirement? That's a request as well.
I would be in favor of that for a small.
That as well.
Is it a one-bedroom unit, two-bedroom?
Uh, yeah, it's sort of like one bedroom and an office kind of thing.
Yeah.
Everyone needs a Zoom room these days.
I just, I think we see the required, they prove that they try to contact the, the neighbors. The, uh, which is, which could, but do, so even that just would.
Regarding the tree treatment, okay. But I'm satisfied with not pushing the applicant to do a full traffic study or give mitigation on this. I mean, there's a parking on the street, right, um, for guests, if this, uh, there's enough parking here for both units. At the school, at Historic North Hampton.
So technically, uh, any construction requires a travel.
Um, no, so, um, the, there's traffic mitigation assumed with a new residential unit. However, there is a waiver that, um.
Too scrunch.
Is, uh, was in place previously about if you could build something without site planner first. Um, and the board has the, meaning it's a small enough scale that, um. You don't, you could do the project except for some other thing that's kicking your site plan, the board can waive that. This is a small unit where previously an accessory dwelling was by right, it didn't require site plan review. So that's why I'm recommending that you, and we haven't changed the zoning to catch up to it.
All right, great, so motion to close public hearing?
I'll move to close public hearing.
A second.
Thank you, Melissa, seconded by Chris Tate. Uh, all those in favor closing the public hearing? Okay. I think we've put the applicant through the rigor here for this small project. Um. Melissa, you've been so good about figuring out if we have any protocells to put on our motion.
Well, see if I, we'll see if I did it right, um, let's see. So I'll move that we approve the site plan for a second detached dwelling by Tim O'Reilly at fifty-three Union Street. Um, with the condition that the applicants follow the recommendation of the arborist. Was there anything else I was gonna say, and then also that we are granting the waiver of the traffic mitigation requirement.
I think we have to note the existing condition of the curb cut and that we're.
Okay, you're accepting the existing condition of the curb cut.
Curb cut width.
Width.
Um.
And if there's damage by construction, that that's a D P W, we'll address that.
And then I I think we also approve the, um, reduced depth of the front porch.
Good, what a team, is there anything else?
Did we miss anything?
Uh, I think that was.
You want us to add anything else?
All right, the motion's been made by Melissa, is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Sam, okay, very good, any more discussion, all those in favor? All right, all in favor, thank you very much, good luck. I'm glad you stuck a vacation in there, busy man.
Had to come back a day early. Is the, is the, uh, okay, thank you.
Uh, bye-bye.
So, um, Tim was asking, he's also helping with this other application for the A, um, A D U. The applicant notified us this morning that they tested positive for COVID, so not here, and instead of having Tim Riley. Um, present, he wanted to request a continuation, so we've got, um, three. Permits already for September twelfth, so I would recommend September twenty-sixth. Um, I let the applicant know that that would probably be the date. So, um, and they're fine with that, they're not planning construction till next spring, so, um, he had no qualms with that continuation.
So we need to make a motion to let, first we open up the.
Yep.
So, uh, we're opening up a site plan for a second detached dwelling by Willem's. Pittsma at one oh five Star Avenue Florence Map I D seventeen D O two one. And we've just heard from staff that, uh, the applicant is asking for a continuation. Um, so, and the board has talked about moving that to the next hearing on September.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six at seven P M.
I move that we, is this, is it open?
I think.
We're open?
Yeah.
To continue, yeah.
Is there any public comment?
Well, you wouldn't want to take.
Okay, okay, uh, I move that we continue this hearing for September twenty-sixth at seven P M.
Great, sir, a second. All right, motion made by Chris, seconded by Stacy, um, any discussion? Glad he didn't come in here with his COVID germs, all those in favor? Unanimous, we'll see you on Sep- in September.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I think we have a set of minutes to approve, are there any?
Minutes.
Last minute minutes.
So I read those minutes. I I would like to move to approve the minutes from that hearing of the date that they are.
July twenty. Great, another motion made by Chris, is there a second? Second by Rich Baker to approve the minutes of July twenty-sixth, all those in favor? Okay, great.
I read them, I was so happy not to be at that hearing.
Um, anything else, Carolyn?
No A and Rs.
Wow, okay.
Did we close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn is made at eight thirteen by Sam, is there a second? Thank you, Stacy, all right, all those in favor?